Okay, Council, let's come to order for, to begin our study session, April 2nd, 2018. We got everyone here tonight, and thank you all for being here and being a part of this session. Our first piece of business is to award, first time in Bemore, in 2018, the Beautiful Business Property of the Month. So Chief, if you would come join me.
I want you to know I did all the work myself. Is that why we don't have a picture? That's right. Well, rightfully so. That's why I'm not up there again. I appreciate that. Rightfully so, that as we have come to open and be functional with our new police station, and what a beautiful building, and the landscaping around it, the weather has not been real suitable, Julia tells me, and I thought we had a lot of nice days, but not very suitable for pictures, so we've kind of got a pseudo-picture in here that will be superseded shortly.
That was very attractive.
But it is attractive, absolutely. I'm not sure where they are or when they were, but in all seriousness, we're very proud of this committee and the work that they do, and particularly pleased this evening to award the first one in 2018 to one of our own, our new police station. And we need to, as we go through the months and years, be sure our properties reflect what we're trying to say to the rest of our community, and they are. So Chief, congratulations.
Thank you.
And congratulations on the first month in also.
We're excited.
All right, very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'm sure these t-shirts don't have anything to do with these...
Free up here.
Well, I feel like Dave.
We heard a presentation by MoDOT at our Sempo meeting, our Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting last week, and I knew they were out and about talking, and I thought it'd be very appropriate now to have and invite the folks from MoDOT to make a presentation about Center Junction, Exit 99, where there's going to be a lot of action going on over the next three years, two years of construction, one year still planning, and two years of construction. So I want to welcome the MoDOT team, Shelton, Williams. So the floor is yours to present Exit 99, Center Junction, and what's going on?
Sure. I'm Jason Williams, and I'm the project manager of South Bay District, and I'm the project manager for the Center Junction Virgin Diamond project. So what I have is, presentation-wise, is actually our design overlaid on Google Earth. I thought that would be the simplest thing. This is what we've been showing people, is how that looks on an aerial view. I think it makes more sense if you look at it from that perspective, instead of me just standing up talking about it. So what I'm going to do, if you don't mind, is run through the project and sort of drive Google Earth here and show you how it works, and I have a model as well that shows how the Virgin Diamond works. A little history about how we got here. These two bridges on Interstate 55, the bridges are getting in poor condition, specifically the bridge decks are really getting in bad shape. And so we started looking at doing a bridge deck replacement for the two bridges over the interstate, on the interstate over 61. As we were looking at that, we thought, well, we did another 30 or so years of life out of that bridge by doing a bridge deck, but is that as far out as we want to look, given the new developments at the interchange? So we started looking at, well, what could we do with a replacement-type project here? And so as we started looking at the replacement options, we thought if we could shorten the spans of the bridge and dramatically reduce the cost of the bridges, maybe we could even do some geometric improvements beneath the bridges on US 61. We hear a lot about how that interchange is a bit unique to folks when they drive it in terms of the geometrics. So we thought we could take a look at what could we do if we shortened those bridge spans? And so I started gathering some ideas on maybe what type of interchanges would fit at this location, and the Virgin Diamond was one of those. Real quickly, we also looked at two other style of interchanges. One is called a single-point urban interchange. And that would be something like this. Basically, it is just what it sounds like. The single-point urban is that all the traffic comes to a single point in the intersection. So this general area here would be where all traffic would converge at a set of signals that would operate the movements at the intersection. Another option that we looked at was called a dog bone design. It's a fairly interesting design. It operates without signals, and essentially it's three-quarters of a roundabout. You can see those here on each side of the interstate, where all the movements are free-flowing. They operate somewhat like the roundabout you see at Lexington and Kings Highway in Nell Albert. And then the Virgin Diamond was the third option that we investigated. So what we did was, we sent those options out to Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly consultants to do a traffic analysis, and just to look at those designs and see how efficiently they operated. So the end result of that study was that the Virgin Diamond came back as the most efficient design of the three. In addition to that, when you factor in the bridge spans for the Virgin Diamond versus the two other style of interchanges, the Virgin Diamond was also the least-cost interchange. So we started looking at the Virgin Diamond in more detail at that point. So what we have is on the screen, and we'll look from west to east, is this Virgin Diamond. And what would happen with this design would be the elimination of the grass median, 176-foot grass median that you see out there now. And so bringing those lanes together and creating the DDI as designed here is what allowed us to shorten the bridge spans from about 578 feet down to 173 as it is currently designed. So it's about a third of the length, the new bridges would be about a third of the length of the bridges of the Virgin Diamond. And so if you started Orchard Road driving west, you can see we're in the north, we're in the southbound lanes, excuse me, in the southbound lanes, we would build, we would utilize the existing southbound roadbed for southbound traffic, build a new northbound roadbed adjacent to that in the median, and then that crosses underneath 55, and the lanes then would be on the north side of the highway east of the interchange, where we'd utilize the southbound lanes, excuse me, the northbound lanes, and build new southbound lanes that would eventually tie in prior to the intersection at the north and south county parks. What we had looked at there is, on the Cape Girardeau side, is a signalized intersection at Veterans Drive. We have talked with some folks with the city about, you know, the interest of having a signalized intersection at that location, and we felt like, you know, if it's going to be signalized, now would be the time to do it. One of the advantages of signalizing it now is, is that, you know, if this connection made now rather than in the future, if this signalized intersection is left as an upgrade, we would split the DDI out so that you transition at this point back to a divided section. This would all have to be disrupted, excuse me, in the future. And so now would be the time to do the signal upgrade. We're going to do one, just because of the economy of utilizing contracts to build this at the same time the DDI is being built. What this does is, by moving the lanes together, obviously creates some additional right-of-way out here that eventually won't out, will most likely dispose of to either the adjacent property owners or to, or put up for sale. And so I've got a model here, a traffic model that we have, it's a simulation that shows how the DDI functions. That will probably fast, it's a little bit long, I'll fast-forward through a few sections of, see how it works. What happens briefly here is that traffic approaches the DDI. Let's assume we're going west, toward Jackson, front gate. Traffic approaches the DDI at this location, stops here for a signalized intersection. On green light, we'll obviously proceed through the intersection. Traffic would now be on the left-hand side of the road. The advantage of that is that you have these free-flowing laps onto the ramps. And so what is now requires a signal, and having to stop traffic on 61 to make a left turn, this traffic now would be able to make left turns unimpeded by through traffic. So it makes your left turn movements much more efficient and much, much safer. Proceeding on, you would, westbound traffic would stop at another signalized intersection, mirror image essentially of what is on the east side, stop, wait for it, green light, proceed on, good intersection, now you're back on the right-hand side of the road. We can watch that process take place.
Those are actual counts, correct?
This is based on actual traffic. So this model may be based on 2019 predicted traffic for the, what we would consider the construction year, and then it also includes a design year, 2039. So we look 20 years out towards the time here. There are about 23,000 vehicles a day that go through this intersection on US 61. We expect that to be a few more thousand than that in the design year 2039. What this perspective will show is actually, from the driver's perspective, how you traverse through the intersection. These red blocks and green blocks that you see on the highway, those actually just represent a red light or a green light at that location. So we'd be heading, in this situation, we'd be traveling eastbound toward Gate from the Jackson side. The centerpiece is a raised concrete divider, which runs the length of the project on the west side of the interstate into the signalized intersection at Veterans on the east. So at this point, when traffic receives a green light, we proceed through the intersection, and it would be on the left-hand side of the roadway. Project would have, you see here on the left, would have, MoDOT calls an NSC wall, which is essentially a retaining structure. It also helps us reduce the length of the bridge. So you get your green light up at the intersection on the east side of the interchange, and now you're back, you're back on the right-hand side of the roadway, approaching Veterans Drive. And now transitioning back into the existing southbound lanes prior to the county park. This perspective would be from I-55 exiting southbound onto the off-ramp on the Jackson side. So as you're approaching the intersection, you're making a right turn, obviously, you'd be able to make a free-flowing right onto US 61 North, going into Gate. This would be signalized. Travel through the intersection, staying on the left-hand side, through the cross under the interstate, and through this signal again, back into the southbound, the existing southbound lanes. This is a raised, full-height concrete barrier beneath the bridge. We have designed right now two-span bridge with columns in the median between the northbound and southbound lanes. Those would be protected, traffic would be protected from those with full-length barriers. It's basically a model from the driver. And so one of the things we are looking at is this signalized intersection now. I think Dan is here, and he has, he's had some input for us on our design. On the Cape Girardeau side, what we're looking at is potentially dual laps into sports complex and Veterans Drive here, as we currently have designed, is a single lap. At this time, the intersection actually does not meet signal warrants, but we are looking at, if we, if we needed a signal in the future, building this intersection now would be easier to do with the upcoming construction contract than having to get back in disruptive traffic the second time, to build a new signalized intersection and make this connection again to the southbound lanes. So at this time, we're still investigating if the dual laps, how that would look. It will take some changes to this intersection as we have it designed, because with dual laps in, the way the intersection is now, is not large enough to receive dual laps into Veterans Drive. That is still in progress. Get back to you, who had a chance to help the city and developers, and help for about this signal. That is pretty much how it operates and the design, and if anybody has any questions, feel free to ask those.
We're still, and appreciate it, we're still working, MoDOT's still working with the landowners around and developers and the city, as Jason said. But this kind of gives you, Council, a perspective of what is coming at that intersection, and what a great upgrade to that very confusing interchange at this point. So at this point, Council, any questions, comments to Jason or the MoDOT people who are here?
Which one of those three designs handles the most traffic, most, pretty much, like it, traffic was to increase more than MoDOT's, especially to go increase?
Yeah, we recently looked at that, we looked at a higher growth rate than we had originally designed for after we met with the Sempo board, and we projected out another, you know, 20 years in with a higher growth rate. 2% growth rate is what we used for that projection, and the Virgin Diamond still, you project out a higher traffic volume, still moves traffic through the intersection more efficiently. The dog bone design that we looked at, just, it's a neat design, it handles traffic on 61 very efficiently, but it does not handle the ramp traffic efficiently, because the volume on 61 is so heavy that the traffic on your ramps, the need to find gaps to get onto 61, they just can't find gaps in traffic. So the dog bone breaks down when it comes to ramp racing. Single-point urban is similar to that, because if you look at the way the Virgin Diamond operates, that this left maneuver from the ramps on 61, it happened at the same time that this traffic, excuse me, this traffic going westbound, so 61 westbound or northbound, have a look at that, can run simultaneous with traffic on the ramps, exiting the ramps, which the single-point urban obviously cannot do, because you have conflict point. This traffic on the ramp would have to wait at a signal until the through traffic cleared. And so that's where the real advantage, the capacity congestion of the DDI.
When you look at this, it's not only the most efficient, but it's the cheapest too, right?
It is, it is the least-cost design.
Jason, I know somebody brought up the issue of being restricted to two lanes in each direction underneath the new bridges for about the next 50 to 60 years. So if traffic increased 30 or 40 years down the road, then we needed three lanes in both directions, we'd have a bottleneck kind of a grid. Is it even feasible to create enough space under the new bridges to allow an extra lane to be added at some point in the future?
As it is designed, we would not have the, we would not have the ability to add an additional lane, given the location of the retaining structures. We'd have to allow that now, which would obviously drive up the cost of your bridge. One of the things that we are running into, issues we're running into is vertical clearance at the interchange. Now, we're more than a foot efficient in vertical clearance, and so folks ask, well, a lot of times, why do we not fix the pavement, pave, overlay the pavement beneath the bridge in the northbound lanes? And one of the reasons for that is, and the main reason for that is, we can't add any height to the pavement, because we are deficient in vertical clearance. So we have over a foot clearance to make up with our bridge design with the DDI, and so as the spans get longer, your derps, the depth of your derps, your bridge gets deeper, so we just continue to fight that clearance battle by extending the bridge further out. So third lane, in addition to third lane, would drive the cost of significantly.
Because the bridge is trying to get longer.
Yeah, and, you know, I'm not aware of, I mean, we would probably not consider a third lane unless there was a plan on the US 61 corridor on either side of Cape or Jackson, to have six lanes of traffic coming in to each side of the bridge, and unaware of that being a part of the long-range plan. Or I know I-55, there is a desire to six-lane I-55, and we have accounted for that with our bridge design, so that if that ever happens, we can widen to the inside of these bridges relatively easily. So that, you know, the bridge time we have doesn't have to either be replaced or have an expensive, I guess, rehab to add to that. We have factored that into our, just our new bridge design.
When you went from the half percent growth to the 2% growth, the through traffic or the 61 traffic still was not the control of the level of service, if I remember right.
Yeah.
Still, it still was an acceptable level of service, even in the design year.
Correct. Back in two-deep into level of service, level of service runs, just like report card, A through F, essentially, and the DDI in the design year, 2039 design year, was still operating at B or C, which is, which is pretty good. A level B or C is really good, actually, for 20-year projected traffic. And when we reran the model for 2% growth, it was still operating at a B or C. And when I say B or C, the reason that is, is because different locations within the intersection have their own level of service, so your ramp intersections have a level of service, your 61 intersection have a level of service, but they were all operating in that B C.
And that's in the peak hour, that's not all the time, obviously. Most of the time, it's operating at a higher level. Anyone else?
Yeah, any question? Any detours or closures, and also, can you talk about the time frame?
Sure. This time frame first, right now, we are looking at May of 2019 bid opening, is what we're shooting for, which would mean the construction would start early summer, late summer of 2019, so around the August, September timeframe. It would be a two-season project, a two-construction season project, which means it would not be completed until the fall of 2020, most likely. This will require traffic to replace the bridges, US 61, obviously, if we're going to replace the bridge, it will require traffic on Interstate 55 to be reduced to one lane in each direction, so we would move traffic head-to-head through whichever lane, you know, was out of construction. And so assuming we build the northbound bridge first, we would ship traffic over to the southbound side and run traffic head-to-head. We'd like to not have that occurrence through winter, head-tracked through winter for obvious reasons of safety and snow removal, so we would like to get at least one of those bridges built in 2019, but the overall project would not be complete by 2020. Because if you look at the way this is designed, and we're building a lot of new pavement in the median, we're grass median now, as construction progresses, obviously, your bridges on Interstate 55, new piers for those bridges are what is going to limit traffic on 61. But we can build a lot of this pavement that you see in the grass median prior to having to move traffic over and start reducing lanes. But there will be, there will be quite a bit of one-lane operation on I-55 and 61 to get this done, because the staging is so intricate for this type of project.
But pretty much through the construction, you'll have at least one open?
We intend, as best we can, to have one lane open at all times.
All times.
In all directions, correct.
Okay.
Do anticipate that there may be times where we have to do a short-term temporary closure, which we would do during off-peak hours or overnight, to try to minimize impact and traffic. Because we know that this gets congested now without any construction, and so we know that it's, it's going, it could be a problem, so we're going to do our best to minimize that.
Council, anything else? So as this proceeds, that pretty much the interaction is going to be with City of Jackson staff, City of Cape staff, and the property owners and developers in the area. So that's where the action will be in the months ahead, but this gives current council and new council some perspective of what's to come. It's very important, this very important interchange.
Just one other thing to point out, maybe it's obvious, maybe it's not, but when they talk about adding the signal, they are looking for, you know, outside participation to outside participation to, to, to do the signal at Veterans Memorial Drive. So they, that's something that, that the city will need to sit down with the developer and decide how, how we would pay for that. There are several different options, and they've gone over with the, with us. I think it's important to note that that will be something that we will need to, to budget for and, and look for, or find, find a way of paying for. So that's, that's something to be decided. Secondly, I just wanted to say, watched a lot of projects develop over my years, and what they've done here is really pretty extraordinary. To see a project that was a maintenance project, come in there, rip the deck off, put that on, that's a, that's a pretty standard project for MODOT and, and one that they eat up and, and do pretty easily and, and do it really well. But to have the vision, and, and Mark, you and Jason need, need to get credit here, to have the vision to say, wait a second, maybe if we shorten this bridge, we can do something more that'll help more citizens. And so I want to give the nod to that because that, that just didn't happen because somebody's just flat out, you know, just doing their job, they're looking beyond their job. And so Jason, Mark, thank you for that.
Yeah, we will echo that from myself and the council too. Getting a lot more bang for the buck than.
Absolutely.
How, when it began with just, just the deck replacement of a long bridge, of a long bridge, two long bridges. Thank you very much for being here. We'll stay tuned. Okay, thank you. Next order of business, Old Town Cape update, Marla Mills.
I would, according to our contract with the city, we are here to give kind of a yearly update. We were just here in October, and so what I have for you, I'll distribute, I'll, okay, won't do that. I'll distribute, yeah, if you don't care. This is one. It's basically an update, thank you, an update of what we presented in October. First, I want to thank, we do, I do have, as you can see, one of our, a couple of our board members here with us, Dr. Steve Hoffman and Alex McRoy are on our board, so thank you for being here, both of you. And then also before I start, and I'm just going to give a highlight of some of what's in that report and then answer some questions, but I also want to thank Councilman Fox and Julia Jones for, we recently returned from a national conference that was held in Kansas City. We helped plan the, the conference. It was a three-day conference with some pre-conference work, about 1,600 people from across the country in Missouri, so it was a great conference. Councilman Fox came and volunteered as well as attended some of the functions, and Julia helped present at one of the sessions on public art. And so I think Cape Girardeau, and then we also had Dr. Hoffman, myself, and Dr. Vargas did a presentation on relationships with university, with higher education and Main Street. So Cape Girardeau was represented well, so thank you for attending that. As far as the update, as I said, this is just kind of updating what you saw in October. This, a lot of the information is for our calendar year because we do it on a quarterly, we report on quarterly basis, so we haven't, excuse me, haven't updated for this quarter yet. Couple of things I want to point out, total investment, so for the 2017 calendar year, total investment in the downtown was over nine million, or right at $9 million. One of the things that, that we do, and I tried to tie this into, again, the city goals and, and have you be able to look at what we do in relation to what the city's goals are so that you can see how we're helping you accomplish those. Part of what we do is, a big part of it is, we act as the, kind of the downtown brand manager. So we, we promote specifically downtown in a way that there's really no one else that does it specifically just for downtown. So we do that, and in that vein, we have a big social media outreach, and so you can see kind of the contacts that we make through our social media, specifically promoting the downtown area. And so we, we try really hard to keep our, we have a separate brand for our organization and for downtown, and so this is really promoting the downtown versus, mostly versus the organization. And then, so a couple of things I just want to highlight on the second page, one of the things we'll be doing, I've talked a little bit about what we've done throughout the year, but one of the things looking forward to this year that we're working on under our Economic Vitality Committee, we're going to be doing some focus groups, partnering with the Economic Business Engagement Center at the university, having conversations with young professionals about downtown and, and what they would like to see downtown and, and what they like, don't like, that kind of thing. And so I think that's going to be fine, we're going to find some insight through those conversations with young professionals. Then we have show and tell, we have, we do, that same committee does a development matrix that we use when talking to businesses that want to locate downtown or looking for businesses downtown, that has quite a bit of information about market, target markets, gaps in the market, what's, what's already in an area. We have done this for, we've broken our district down into a couple of areas, so for the riverfront, kind of lower Broadway, upper Broadway, and we're working on a section for the Good Hope area with the, everything that's going on in that area, looking at how we can better market that. As far as design, in the design area on the third page, one of the things that we do and have done for years is manage the Christmas decorations downtown. And this, I'll bring this up because this year, I think it was particularly notable that in our partnership with the Downtown Community Improvement District, we were able to facilitate the purchase of additional Christmas decorations, and we facilitated then decorating all of downtown, including those new ones. But we had lots of comments on those, and we have a small group of people that help us pick, kind of pick those out and, and manage those. We also were able to install, actually just a couple of weeks ago, we finalized the development of some new reader boards for the Wall of Fame. Those were, had been there since that, the wall had been painted, and many of them had been, were not legible anymore, were destroyed. And so we, in partnership with Visit Haven through a grant with Missouri Humanities Council, we replaced those reader boards. And then on your last page, just talking about our, our main goal, our main job, I think, our role as, under our contract with the city, is to be a liaison for, for the city. And I think that helps leverage for the council and for the city, a lot of hours of, of time, and it reduces, I think, the need for some additional city employees to do some of what we do. And then, of course, we, we, and we do work closely, as Chief Blair can attest, with the city, with the police on, not just issues in downtown, but events and activities, either ours or other people who are bringing events downtown to make sure that, that all goes smoothly. Of course, we're really proud of the grant that we were awarded with the support of the community, the Partners in Preservation Grant. So we are working with city staff right now and, and consultants to implement that grant, which will put a roof back on Iver Square. We have already brought a structural engineer in to look at that. We're, we're working with the county and the city as far as the maintenance issues that are going to be paid for out of that, as far as the, the fountain, upgrade or doing maintenance on the fountain and some things like that. So we're moving forward with that. And in June, we will be doing a facilitated board retreat to really look at the priorities of the organization, what we're focusing on in relation to the down, new downtown strategic plan, and to try to evaluate the district itself. The board will be physically walking the district, making sure that our priorities match the plan and match the actual downtown needs. And so those, those are the things I wanted to highlight, I will pass out. Also, just kind of a visual for you before I go, that we used at our annual dinner, and it talks about some of what's in this report, and then also gives you some information about some of the other things we were doing, did in 2017 and are doing in 2018. But that's all I really have, but we'll be happy to answer questions, other than, we do have a, currently have a three-year contract with the city, and we will be coming back to the city in a couple of weeks. I know you're getting ready to talk about budget, so asking for renewal of the current contract that we have. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
As you pass those out.
Sure.
My comments will be first to Bob and Julia for traveling and, and representing the City of Cape Girardeau at that, at that conference, national conference, where not only we were represented in the state of Missouri, but throughout the, throughout the nation. And to, to you, Marla, and, and to the board, and to all of downtown interests and, and businesses and so forth, congratulations on continuing to transform downtown and grow downtown. It just seems to be every year you see it different, and it's going to be different this year. Broadway will be significantly different this year as we proceed through the year, and Marriott opens, among others. So there's more coming, but downtown is, is alive and well, and to your credit, the board's credit, and all of downtown credit, from me, congratulations.
Thank you, mayor, I appreciate that. And I, and I do want to comment, I think that one of the things that we keep getting recognized for, and that I recognize makes all of this possible, are the partnerships that we have, and so our ability to work with the city and, not just the city, but other groups in, in town, and the willingness of this community to work together has really allowed a lot of that to be accomplished. So we appreciate those partnerships.
Questions or comments from council?
I'd just like to say it was a great meeting, and it's my fault, Marla, you can attend sessions, but I think you learn more just from visiting with people and talking to other people about what's going on in their community. I know, like Marla said, there are some things that are a little tricky for certain areas, but you should get a lot of ideas of the things you can do to help your own city and talk to other people in the city, and it's big. And I will say that I attended a good portion of each of the presentations given by Cape Girardeau, and they were very, very well attended, and there were a lot of positive comments about what we're doing here with the art and how we've developed a partnership with the university. I talked to Stephen Carlos, she did a great job at that, and there were, there were tons of questions about, about how we've benefited, the university's benefited both from, from our partnership, not only downtown, but they specifically talked about downtown, but it's all over the community.
Yeah, great.
It's a great meeting.
Very good. Any other comments, questions, Marla?
Just had one, I was very impressed with the new lights downtown, the first Friday in December, there were so many people downtown, in our downtown, as cold as it was, it was just amazing. Parking was filled up everywhere, and it was really neat to see at that time of year and with the new streets and sidewalks and everything. What an attraction.
Yep.
And thank you, Marla, for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone here to appear before the council on any item that is not on the agenda? Welcome to appear before the council. Anyone? Dan?
For the project that we just talked about? Most everybody knows me, I'm Dan Drury, President of InAmerica Hotels Corporation. Just want to say, these guys have done a fantastic job. They've spent a lot of time working with us. They don't necessarily like everything we come up with, and I don't necessarily like everything they come up with, but we're working together, and, and that's a good thing. I highly suggest that we work together on the, the Veterans Memorial Drive addition for the second turn lane, simply because of the amount of traffic that will be going up there in the near future, as it is now. As I spoke to the, the last conference that we had last week or week before, I was heading out to church at 8:30 in the morning on a Sunday, and the, the lot for the sportsplex was almost full. So with a single lane, we only have seven cars stacking to make the left-hand turn off the interstate up to Veterans Memorial Drive. We're suggesting a double left, as Jason said earlier, and, and I am, I'm here to enforce, not enforce, but also to suggest that the council look at that. And if you don't mind, I've got some, just some quick drawings that we did, I'd like to pass it out to you, and that way you can see what the intersection looks like. I think it's neat. I mean, I got some issues on the other side, but you know, that's not for here, that's for us to take care of otherwise. But I think they've done a super job coming up with what they did. Those of you who have been around for years know, my dad suggested 25 years ago or more that we bring those lanes together. And, you know, now it's starting to happen, and, and I wish he was here to see it, but, you know, he'll see it from another perspective than we will, as he always said at 30,000 feet. So to you guys, Jason, and the team, or you guys and all that, thank you for working with us. We're the principal property owners on both sides, and I think it's going to be neat. I'm excited to see it. I, I will say, the first time some people go through this intersection, they're going to think MODOT's a drunk, but you know, it, right?
And it's kind of going to be follow the Yellow Brick Road.
Yeah, it is. You better follow the Yellow Brick Road, and you're going to be in the Yellow Brick Road. But I just wanted to come up and give my support.
Okay, that's great, we appreciate it. And if you have a pass out for council, that's, that's great.
I'll pass it out to Jason first, so he knows what show, we've already thought about, so. This is just the, the east side going up to the left-hand turn through the sportsplex.
Good to see you walking, Dan.
Good to be walking, only my seventh day in shoes, so. Sorry, Jason, I just wanted to get this.
Not a problem. Thank you for being here.
Let me just go through, you know, the options, and what's the best way to get, get to it.
That's, that's what they're working on. They've been very helpful.
Yep, they laid out a bunch of good ones, it's just matter of how we pay for it.
It's just like racing. Team costs, how fast you want to go.
There we go. We're here. Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else to appear before the council? Any item not on the agenda? Pardon?
I'd also like to say, Marla, you guys have done a fantastic job. I know it seemed like East, I mean, Old Town versus West.
No, 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 don't say that, we're all together.
Sometimes people think that, and, and I'm excited about it, it's like you said, Robbie, I think you said, I don't know, you know, seeing it full, you know, that's.
Wasn't always that way, was it?
As, as my dad would say, that's gooder than good.
Yep, yep.
Congratulations, yes.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you for being here.
Mayor, I have some of my most critical and supportive constituents here.
Okay.
One of those constituents has been asking me for a year now when I could get some support for an idea that she has. I was hoping that she would be going to share this with us, but alas, I think maybe she'd prefer that I spoke on her behalf. But her idea was that we paint all of our fleet vehicles with chalkboard paint, so that children that is hurt can paint beautiful drawings on them, and all the residents of Cape Girardeau can see their gorgeous artwork. So I'm, I'm hoping that that's something that future councils will be able to consider going forward.
All right, for, so thank you for representing your spouse. Anyone else? Any item not on the agenda? Okay, Scott, let's take through our agenda.
We have one presentation tonight, it'll be for the Arbor Day proclamation. I believe the chairman of the tree board will be here to receive that, so I'll start off with that after we adopt the agenda, and then communications and reports. Counsel, do you have things you'd like to report?
Well, I'll have a vote tomorrow, and I'm going to, this is the, this is the T-shirt thing, so Danny has been, done yeoman work on the committee, so I'm going to relent to you, Danny, to talk about the T-shirts and the vote. I also want to report on. I also want to report on our naming of a stubbed-in road down at Nash Road, the Robert B. Hendrix Road, in honor of a gentleman from the Chamber of Commerce who was so instrumental in beginning and promoting the industrial area of development of Nash Road. And then I'll have a few thank yous to give. Any other counsel?
I'm going to talk about, sorry, the comprehensive plan vision 2040.
Okay.
We got the first draft from Tesca Associates last week, so I'm just going to touch on that.
Okay. Anyone else?
I'd like to say something about Old Town Cape again, they got another award.
Okay, that's great. Very good. Other staff? Other council staff? Anything? Okay.
We have two public hearings tonight. We have a public hearing to rezone 835 Bodian Lane. Looks like we have some representation from, from them to speak probably. And then we have a second public hearing that will be for the vacation of Decatur Street. I don't know if you want to hear from Chad now, or you want to wait until?
Let's just wait until we get to the seven o'clock.
Give you a shot at it at seven, Chad. So we have those two public hearings, and I believe that...
And the one, the Bodian Lane has an action item 17, we'll go right to that, in the interest of parties that are going to be here for that. Okay?
Consent agenda tonight, we have second and third reading of the improvements for Cape Dogwood at Town Plaza. They have the Community Improvement District is number four, the chapter 353 is, is number five. The second and third readings of those have been fully discussed, been fully reported upon. The third, number six, is the second and third reading of the record plat for Longford subdivision. That's a taking one lot and making two. Seven, eight, nine, and 10 items are for our Emergency Solutions Grant. This is a, seems like, you know, two times a year, we do the grant, and then we have a reporting mechanism also that comes back and report on what's happening with the grants. So you see these great agencies in front of you on a regular basis. They'll go to Catholic Charities, the Community Carrying Council, Safe House for Women, and Salvation Army. So it'll be the authorizing the execution of those grants and agreements. 11 is a license and bidding agreement. This is for the sign on the mar, on the new hotel on 400 Broadway at the corner. And so the new Marriott sign will overhang the, the right away a little, so we do an L and I on that. And then a supplemental agreement to give KLG Engineering a little more time for the independent sidewalk project. They're doing some additional acquisition that will take a little more time. Number 13 is a resolution opposing nation, Osage Nation tribal gaming in Missouri. Number 14 is a resolution opposing video lottery gaming in Missouri.
And council, we've asked the staff to bring those to us this evening, so they're on.
Number 15 is the legislation that would restrict cities' ability to do landlord inspections, which we worked, this council, and has worked very hard to have in place to improve our landlord stock and building stock in our city, and this would remove that, prevent interior inspections. And so we have a resolution opposing that legislation as well.
And again, I'd like to thank Council of Missouri for bringing that to our attention and bringing that to staff, so we can bring that to us this evening. So thank you.
Number 16 will be the final payment for Fire Station Number Four, depends on construction. And that concludes the consent agenda. Are there any items that you would like to remove or declare your abstention from? Not new ordinances, we have ordinance number 17 is from the hearing that we talked about on Bodian, the change in zoning there. Number 18 is the change in the chronic nuisance properties. This is a benef, an effective ordinance, but this expands the ability to take action after one illegal firearms offense, and helps us move quicker on, on those. And so we're asking council to, to change that ordinance, and the first reading is tonight on that. We have a committee that meets regularly to look at our nuisance properties, to see about actions to take, and this is one that they corporately have asked for. Number 19 is storm water management regulations. This is a, a ordinance that puts some charts and some design criteria in our development code. This is one that was asked for from our developers' roundtable. We meet regularly with developers, they come together, talk about problems they're, they're having, and this is, this first inch of storm water is one that they brought up last time, and this gives them better guidance so that their consultants and designers can, can have a better direction in where to go on that design. So this helps them out, and we're glad, glad for that in response to them. Number 20 is a quick claim deed. This is transfer adjacent property, Melody Lane, was going to continue, then abandoned it at the time. We did this several years ago, we just sent the deeds to the property owners to, to record. Not all of them did that, so this is action so that we can take care of that. And then 21 is the skate park, the design construction of the skate park with American Ramp Company. This is a company that's already been vetted and bid nationally and allows us to use this a pretty specialty area, where we would have a hard time attracting contractors to this. By using this national contract allows us to get a good, good price and move forward with the skate park, which been approved previously by councils twice. One of them was when we gave, designated the land, the Fair Board designated the land to use, and then the other time was when we discussed the use of, of excess PRS-1 funds that were made available due to the lecture revenue and our frugal use of funds by our Any question on those new ordinances? Number 22 is the appointment to the Tax Increment Financing Corporation. I believe these are reappointments.
Reappointments of John Mayner and Adrian Henry to the IF Commission. Mayor appointment with your consent, as we spoke at our study session last time, I'm asking that those two be reappointed with your consent, John Mayner and Adrian Henry. Any other business to come before our study session? If not, we do need to have a closed session, council, this evening for legal action, litigation, competent communication with our legal counsel and personnel matters pursuant to the revised statutes, Missouri Statute 610, 021, numbers one and three, if I could have a motion.
Oh, my.
Seconded by God. Those in favor, aye?
Aye.
As opposed? Okay, we'll stand adjourned and reconvene at 7:00 PM. Thank you all for being here.
I have a question. On this, these just, this is the, the change in the...
From R2 to R4. So R4 allows for units that make up more...
We have the Honorable Young Men's Club President Wiki Jean and Vice President Catrall Andrews with us now. So glad to have you. I'm, I am very impressed by your organization, Honorable Young Men's Club. And I looked it up, I did my research on Facebook, so I could see what you were doing. But I have to admit, I'm, I'm a little sad you're not wearing a tie, because I know that the young men were taught how to tie their ties. And that's okay, I love your show. I'm just teasing you. I saw some wonderful things that you all were doing with these young boys. Now, these are like middle school boys that you're working with? Yes, middle school and junior high. Okay, so you, as a former substitute teacher and Sunday School teacher, you, you had me at, you know, high. What I wanted to ask you about this show, though, is what does this organization, what does this...
Where do they come from? Well, we have been volunteering in the community for many, many years, and we all volunteered in different areas and worked in different areas. And so the opportunity arose from just, um, it's a really, really time. And so we were dealing with kids that, it was kind of sad too, but, um, on New Year's Day, Reese opened up his doors and allowed, actually quickly started rolling towards him first, to see what's possibly happening. And we started getting involved with the kids out there, and it sparked an interest for us there. We did that for a few years, and ended moving, but coming back, because he got promoted to work at a different gym, not a senior, Kentucky, and then went back. It was a blessing to have him back, because as we were working with the kids at the, at the boxing academy, his mother came up with this thought, like, oh, you guys like mentoring the kids in the school. And we're, you know, we're, we're up for challenges, you know? We're like, yeah, that sounds like a cool idea, you know? Didn't really know what direction we were going to take. We were just like, you know, we help the kids now, we want to see them get better, we want to see them prosper, so just step into the school, that's what we can do. And that's how it kind of started off.
Well, it, it sounds like you're doing great things. I, I know some of these boys, and I know that they desperately need strong role models in their lives. I mean, they, they're just aching for someone to show them how to make the right decisions, how to, how to tie a tie, how to walk around with their head held high. And that is a big deal, to look at the, the two of you, and you're strong individuals, and you're competent, and you're not dependent on other people. You know, tell me, Catrall, what does it mean for you when you sit down with these young men and you're able to do this for us?
It means a lot, honestly, because we realize how important a male figure is in a child's life.
I know.
That when that child does not have that male figure at home, and he looks to you as that, that role model, it means a lot. You know, it means a lot to us, because you know, I have a stepfather, you know, who his dad wasn't there too much, so we have football coaches, you know, track coaches, basketball coaches that were our mentor, but to able to sit down with this guy, to know that he, you know, you may potentially be their last monitor, basically before they go to a school, to a access, or assess, you know, it's, it's a heavy feeling, but at the same time, you rejoice, because you know, okay, this is my book, I have it over here.
Absolutely. What do you think is the most important function of your Honorable Young Men Club for these boys? The very, like, at the core of what you're doing? Besides being strong role models, are you there to help them listen?
I would say so, yes. First, the versus relationship, you know, my book says, you have to be able to connect people for your brain. And, you know, you just can't go in there and tell the kid, like, hey, don't do this, or don't say that. You're looking like, who are you? But once you're able to build a relationship with this child, and they know that they can trust you, and you're not just around for a short time, that you're here for a long period of time, you build that trust, and then after a while, you can start correcting them, and start leading them in that right direction, because they do trust you, and that's the biggest thing. They don't, they don't have a lot of trust, you know, back at home. So when they do find a trust, they really gravitate towards it, and at the same time, you have to be careful, because whatever you say to these kids, they hold on tight to it. So if you say you're going to pick them up at a so-and-so time, you got to be there at that time.
You absolutely do. I've, I, my husband was like a fifth and sixth grade boys' basketball coach for a church league, and sometimes I had to take them home, and, you know, they, they were very dependent on me, you know, relying on me to give them their ride home. So are those the kinds of things that you're doing outside of those meetings? Are you attending their games? Are you, you know, are you helping them find ways to, to manage their home life?
Oh, yeah. I think that's a very important part, is like outside of school, you know, that sort of trouble can happen, or opportunities can happen, so we try to provide as many opportunities as we can, getting the community involved, getting them connected, letting kids see things that they never have seen before. So the outside life, we support through the time. I mean, we're former ball players, so like, we love being at sporting, sporting arrangements and cheering them on. We went to a wrestling match at the junior high this season, and we got to see our boys wrestle, and we got to see, there was ANC, and, you know, just them going, going really hard. It's cool, you know, it's just, it's fun to just be there and see your boys compete. And there's a lot of life lessons in those sports. But when you go out there and, and you watch them in them environments, they can always come back and flash, and it's something you could talk about, you know, and tie that with the core value or life lesson that we, that we have about and bridge. So it's a lot of connecting factors when you're with them outside of school.
And we have a, a minute or so left, but I, I want to know if, if there's a mom, or a teacher, or a coach, or something that's watching this, and they want to connect a kid with you, how do they go about doing that?
We have a basic place that we connect with the community with. We usually have business guards, or, you know, you can contact the school board office, or either building, or the school, the junior high.
Okay. The middle school, the junior high, or the school board office for Cape Girardeau?
Yes, ma'am.
It's so great to have you here. The things that you're doing change lives, but they also improve the community in the same ways that Mayor, Mayor Harry works to improve the community, that's what the two of you do. So we're very proud to have you as part of Cape Girardeau. Thank you. All right. We've been talking with Wiki Jean and Catrall Andrews of Honorable Young Men. After the break, we'll hear from KRCU's Colin Ritter about an exciting TEDx event coming to Cape Girardeau.
At Southeast Missouri State, we know agriculture can mean so much more than working on the farm. It means research and lab work that lead to profitability and sustainability. It means creating new jobs, jobs that other people haven't even thought of yet. It means the spirit of entrepreneurship and the desire to make your own way. You want to do something groundbreaking beyond plowing fields, so let's get started.
National forests are essential to life, majestic and grand. They clean our air, supply drinking water to millions of Americans, and provide homes to countless wildlife. They fuel our imaginations and inspire us to think big. Now our national forests need us. Fires and natural disasters destroy millions of trees each year. That's why we're replanting our forests from coast to coast. Visit arborday.org, see how you can help.
At Southeast Missouri State, we've been launching the extraordinary careers of educators for nearly 150 years. But that's the thing about educators, they're always ready to learn more, discover new paths, and push themselves to the next level. With our new online educational leadership programs, you can earn the credentials needed to move up in your career. With flexibility for your schedule, accelerated courses, and an affordable price, together we can transform our learning communities and prepare you to conquer your holdings.
This is Cape Chronicle, and I'm Audra Cain. TED Talks are hot topics lately, but a more localized version, the TEDx, is coming to Southeast Missouri State. Event organizer and KRCU producer and host, Colin Ritter, is here to outline what would be the place. Colin, thank you so much for coming in.
Thanks for having me.
Okay, so for people who don't know what TED is, or what TEDx is, I actually had to Google it myself.
No worries.
I don't want, I don't want people to feel like they're, they know less than I do, because I know absolutely nothing about this. I didn't realize that the TED Talks, or that the TED Organization, which is Technology, Entertainment, and Design... Entertainment, and Design, began back in 1984 as a way of spreading ideas. Um, it's a nonprofit organization, and they've licensed TEDx freely to anyone who wants to create an event. So you are the organizer for the event coming up on?
March 1st.
March 1st. So what is the theme for this TEDx?
So this year's theme is Matter of Time. It all began back in the summer of 2015, when Brooke Hildebrandt-Club, who's my co-organizer, we got together to plan and apply for the first TEDx license for Southeast Missouri State. Our first theme was diverse passions, so the different diverse passions that we have in our lives, and that's with regard to anything that you may do, work or hobbies or anything of that nature. And we really tried to focus on relevant events, current events and current issues that are existing and all around us. That's really what we tried to focus on with Matter of Time. And sort of relating to diverse passions in some sort of way, it talks about those integral parts in your life as time goes on and how you change and how you have different revelations and those impact you and make you who you are.
Okay, so, um, Matter of Time is going to center around what type of speaker?
We have several different types of speakers. Of the four we have, um, we have, there are four total that will be speaking at the event, uh, live, um, one of which is a graduate student at the university, one is an alum, one is a professor, and one is a recent grad student. But we have a good mix match, all from the university that will be speaking and representing the community as a whole.
Okay, so they'll each pull their own timely events in their life, and so this is gonna be rather personal then?
It is. This, that's really what we tried to focus on, and it's really coming through. This TEDx specifically is very personal, and I think that's good, and I, and Brooke I know agrees with me. I think it's sometimes in life, you know, when you have someone who has the guts, the bravery to, to talk about their very personal, you know, happenings in life, I think it can help others come forward and speak out about maybe problems that they're having and things like that. Not necessarily problems, but, but good things happening in your life as well.
Sure, uh, just because it's a negative to one person doesn't mean you necessarily have to consider it as a negative in your own life. Um, so as far as the event happening on March the 1st, where will it be?
It will be at the Alumni Center on Southeast Campus at 7 o'clock, 7:00 PM.
Right there on Broadway?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, a couple hours?
Yeah, you know, it, it kind of ranges, I believe, you know, last time it went about two and a half, three hours. We're gonna keep it around two hours this time.
Okay, so around, you know, half hour, 20 minutes for each speaker. Um, I, I was going to ask, like, you know, what will the event be like, but I'm gonna assume that it's similar to other speaking engagements, but will there be other things that are involved?
Uh, you know, of course, there'll be, we, we have the live speakers, but also when you, you license a TEDx event, they do require a few TEDx speeches or talks presented on screen in the room. So it kind of, it centers around that whole TEDx environment, that TEDx brand. Not only do you have live speakers there, but you also have that, that technology, that digital aspect from a lot of very famous TEDx talks that have gone on. And it kind of, it brings the two together to give it a more holistic profile.
Is there a way to kind of preview things? I know that a lot of TED Talks are online. Um, is there a way to preview what is going to be coming as far as the speakers will go?
Yeah, um, we're actually working with marketing right now, and all those materials will be going out rather soon to kind of give a brief hint as to what the speakers will be talking about, because we don't want to give it away. We kind of like the anticipation that builds up beforehand. The only people that will truly know the ins and outs of what will be said will be Brooke and myself, who kind of work with the speakers, primarily Brooke, because he's much better at that than I am. And we kind of go from there, but it's, as far as getting an understanding with TED is, you can, of course, go to the TED's YouTube page, YouTube channel, and look at talks from the past to get an idea of what you're going to have at the event.
Um, people share them on social media a lot. Um, as, uh, as a radio host and as a producer, what do you find the most interesting about putting this type of event on?
I think the most interesting thing for me is the fact that, kind of what I alluded to earlier, you get to hear people talk about deeply personal things, deeply personal topics, that in some instances are not as much talked about. You get to see the true nature of people. It's, it's kind of, you get to see some grit and a sin. And, you know, I, I think people shouldn't be afraid to make people uncomfortable with storytelling. I think that's the beauty of storytelling, that you can go the extra mile and tell something that can change someone, and that's, that's kind of what TED's about, you know, it's ideas we're spreading, that's the slogan of TED. But it's truly about spreading those ideas and kind of helping people flourish, because if we stick to one mundane story for our entire life, we never know anything different. But TED really takes that avenue and says, you know, let me introduce a new idea into your life, and take it and let's see what you do with it.
You scream public radio. It oozes out of your pores, and I'm saying that totally as a compliment.
I will take that as a compliment.
KRCU producer and host Colin Ritter, thank you so much for coming by. It's been great to meet you.
It's been great meeting you as well.
I look forward to seeing more great things from you. And thank you for joining us today for Cape Chronicle. The program is a collaboration between the Department of Mass Media at Southeast Missouri State University and the City of Cape Girardeau. Our executive producer is Dr. Jim Dufek. I'm Audra Cain, thanks for watching.
Good, look good on TV.
Oh, you saw me after. With the clothes off?
Clothes off, yes. Because we have a spring.
I can't this big here, but it's gonna be cold.
Yeah.
It's gonna have nice springs.
Because we have awesome springs. So you're gonna sleep tonight? You okay? Good? Six. Six. It's a heavy body.
That's why I'm happy and just as cute as that. You're really funny.
No.
I know it's wasn't.
It's hard to imagine.
I see something.
Something?
Something's happening. I should.
Yeah.
I should text him. I was there. I wanted to. To get up. Strung. And. I'm. I'm laughing. And I'm. Just started to stop.
Okay.
And I didn't realize. And I didn't know that you were having it.
Okay, so, full confession, I skimmed everything except the economic development chapter. And planned on doing it at the keeper time this week. I am... I'm okay to posit it on stuff that they laid out in the DVD chapter, but I thought their research and their...
Hey Julia?
Yes?
You have the camera and you follow me?
I do.
Never gonna do it before the meeting.
Oh, great. That's wonderful.
There was a shirt.
There is a green button this quarter.
Basketball game?
Okay. No, that's awesome.
I was going to ask a couple days ago, outside.
Yeah, I guess so.
So you think it's cursory, so?
No, no, no. Twenty, it's twenty-four.
How are you doing?
I'm fine.
Good to see you.
How are you, sir?
I'm doing fine.
Good.
Andy Esner, good to see you.
Well, it's always good to be here.
Absolutely.
And I tell you, this is a plus for the city, you know, to have the invocations before each meeting.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Gets us started off on the right path, doesn't it?
Well, I mean, at least, god, like now, he said, God's the ultimate one in charge.
Looking for some divine guidance?
Well, I mean, y'all have kind of a thankless job. It's an important one. Oh, no, I mean, the best you can do is... That's all.
The answer would be... The answer would be...
Yeah.
You're doing fine?
I'm good.
Sure. Probably make it everybody fair. Robbie, you can let it. And I just, I can do that.
I'll let you know.
Ready? Awesome. You're gonna be officially go home watch basketball.
Counting on you guys to get it loaded, at least by eight o'clock.
I'm so excited.
I was gonna say, that's a lot of...
Anyway, you gotta get it thirteen minutes.
Fine.
Just do it fast. They're counting on you to line them up. What are you doing? Where's the mayor? What's he think? This is his last one or what?
He's taking his time.
You're missing Joe, you're missing the mayor. There they are.
Robbie?
What?
Bring my book?
No.
My book?
Why would I bring your book?
You see your brother's paper?
Green?
I have a binder right there.
Yeah, I know.
Your own is on the table?
Green.
And how work?
He's over there.